We called this meeting a regular council to order this day, April 16th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. additions to the agenda, consent agenda, appropriations ordinance, petty cash of $419.27, and executive session to discuss possible hire pursuant to the non-elected personnel manner of accession for police. Can I get a motion?
It's on me.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries for it. All right. Citizens comments.
Stafford County Economic Development, I guess just maybe some background information. Owns several properties around the county related to the work that we do. We own housing, we own commercial building, a couple of lots that are being essentially kind of held for potential development. We pay tax on them. I think sometimes people don't realize that 501(c)(3) is income tax exempt, but not property tax exempt. So in total, we pay about $11,500 worth of property taxes each year. And you know, on properties that we receive income from, it's very, I think, fitting that we do. The state allows for property that is being used specifically for your tax-exempt purpose to be exempted. You have to make an application to the Board of Tax Appeals. And now that the building that we're putting the shared workspace in will be used entirely for our tax-exempt charitable programming, we think that it would be helpful to reduce the overhead for that year in and year out. And maybe I should give a little more detail. I don't know. I kind of assume maybe that people know more about what we're doing there than they maybe do. So the space, we've actually got a grant pending with USDA that would give us additional funding to make some modifications to the downstairs space. The upstairs space is actually also being used for tax-exempt purposes. We're housing AmeriCorps interns that are essentially giving a service year to work here on community betterment projects. We have one person that has already moved here. We've got two other positions we're hiring, you know, advertising for. But that is a part of how we can recruit those service members to our areas, providing them housing. So that's in the upstairs part. The downstairs part, we're proposing to use as a shared workspace that has maybe additional services than what you might see in a shared workspace typical in like, say Wichita, which might be just, hey, you've got space here, rent it and work. What we're trying to do is be more proactive in helping people find productive employment, especially in the remote work field. So we know that there are thousands of jobs out there that hire remote employees, but we also have some assumptions that, one, it's hard to even know what those jobs are, where they are, how to find them. There's a range, there's entry-level jobs, there's, you know, things that are certain, that are very, very technical, computer engineering and so forth. Most of our population's not going to be qualified for that, but there are ones that perhaps they would be. And especially if we provide an element of digital literacy training and if we can kind of assess what the right employers need and what our people need, we may be able to find other types of training that we can bring in and offer to help people be qualified to get those jobs. So the USDA grant that we should know by the end of the month whether we got it or not. And if we don't get this one, we're going to keep trying other ways to get the job, get it done. But it would allow us to make some modifications to the space downstairs. It's got a bathroom that's really not very adequate. It would allow us to install a couple of ADA bathrooms, set up cubicles, a couple of offices that are segregated as separate offices where you could close the door if your job needed that. Would allow us to buy equipment, offset some of the bar overhead for the first year and like. The intent is to run that as an ongoing program, charge a minimal fee that offsets our costs of utilities and internet. Even just the idea that we're providing high-speed internet is an important factor in this because we've come to the understanding that some of the companies that we'll hire will do speed tests, and if you don't have high enough speed on your internet connection, even if you're otherwise qualified for the job, they won't hire you. We know not everybody's got that to their home, being able to provide that. And you know, we've benefited from the idea that Golden Belt Telephones recently installed the fiber optic capability that can deliver a terabyte of capacity there. So that's a nice feature that we're able to kind of capitalize on. I think our assumption is also just having a structured workspace may help some people who not working, you know, working from home may not be for everyone. If we can kind of offer a structured environment, some, again, training and support, maybe support even on an ongoing basis to maintain the job, that that will be a benefit. We're hoping that we can service 15-ish people. It would be probably our max capacity at a time, but yeah, we get five. That's more than most startup businesses are generating here. So it would be, you know, be something. So we had, okay, coming back to the reason I'm here, we have made an application to Board of Tax Appeals that because we're using this as specifically our tax-exempt charitable purpose, that we'd be exempt from the property tax. The county submitted, that they put in, the county's consented to it basically. They said they make note, the county recommends the request for exemption be granted. The county did not request a hearing, but the Board of Tax Appeals did ask for a couple of additional pieces of information. They asked for us to provide our 501(c)(3) approval to fill out a questionnaire. And the reason I'm here is they asked us to submit a letter provided by community leader, elected official, or state agency evidencing that there is community need for the service. So it doesn't have to come from city council, but it could, or the mayor or whatever. And I'm essentially asking if you'd be willing to provide that. I, trying to make it a little easier, drafted a letter which was in the car on the way home from Manhattan today, so I don't have it printed off, but it didn't have to be this, but if this makes it easier to have something to decide on. It says, "I'm writing in support of Stafford County Economic Development's application for exemption of ad valorem taxes at 311 North Broadway in St. John. The activities that Stafford County Economic Development proposes within the building are a part of carrying out its charitable economic development purposes. Our community very much needs job creation and to reverse the population decline in order to maintain critical public services that the City of St. John provides, as well as local schools, grocery store, and healthcare. The service that Eco Diva proposes to offer at 311 North Broadway to include training, shared office space and equipment, and support to citizens acquiring remote jobs is a valuable service and fills a community need not being met by other local agencies or companies. Additionally, the second-story apartment will provide living space to AmeriCorps interns who are giving a year of community service to community improvement. All of these activities are humanitarian and improve social welfare in our community."
So it's as simple as mayor's signature, no attorney fees we're going to have, correct?
No.
Just the 20 minutes since she started talking.
The time you'll never get back.
Well, let's keep it simple. I mean, I'm okay with that.
Didn't the city submit a letter with the USDA grant application?
Yes, that was a grant application. This was a separate, I mean, it's just a separate deal. It's specifically the property tax.
Well, if council is okay with me going ahead and signing that, then I'll be able to take care of that for you, so.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. I'll email it to Jamie and we'll get it signed tomorrow.
Get it signed tomorrow when I come in here.
Okay. Perfect.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any more citizens' comments?
You may.
I was wondering about that. Okay. Consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, April 2nd, 2019. Can I get a motion?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Five. Appropriation ordinance, 4-16-19, any amount of $38,270 and petty cash of $419.27. Can I get a motion?
So move.
That's for...
Appropriation ordinance.
Yeah. Jeff, on, what's the deal with the, it says a service for the garage that Monomies? What is that?
Police Department.
For what?
Probably when Jim took it up there last time for those headlights.
Oh, they fixed the headlights?
No, they didn't.
When they didn't put oil over it.
No, that was a fish, that was a, what's the date on that? You say?
3/25. It was invoice date.
Right.
So.
3/2.
I just want to point out that all invoices are available.
Yeah, that's why I was confused.
I don't remember.
You drive a Dodge and then the city's...
Yeah, but I haven't taken it up there, but I followed you one day and picked you up, but I don't remember what day it was.
But we don't know what that bill's for?
Wasn't anything mine.
4/27.
Yeah, that's when they checked out the Dodge truck and said that it needed...
I thought that's how much it was.
It needed an overhaul when it needed oil.
Well, I'm just getting that, like, to service our stuff down here is all.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's probably what that's from. I'm guessing.
Well, just like I told you guys, I mean, we're on top of it now, so.
3/2. It was invoice date, so I mean, it could have been early in March if they pulled out it being in the month.
That's not today, it didn't work.
Yeah, because that would have been the end of February, because I believe our former chief was, left on the 5th of March.
Yeah, we did that before he left.
Yeah.
Exactly. He just took it up there because of the knocking sound.
The headlights. Because we're having a headlight issue, just wanted to check it out.
Tant expenses.
And the date that that was done?
The invoice date was from 3/19.
I don't think we've seen the invoice for him taking a truck up there to have the headlights repaired or the knocking.
I guess that's probably wrong.
Because that last council meeting, Jim was here.
I don't think we've seen the invoice.
3/25, I mean, obviously.
The invoice date appears 3/1.
3/1.
Yeah, that's probably close.
It felt right.
So they replaced the Cooley idler tension belt?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the...
Because it had a fair steering helm in it.
To check out the lights, it was 150. All right. I'm just getting that. If we got this down here, let's use it, guys.
And we discussed that before, too.
Okay, I have a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion four to one. Christie, I'm standing. Okay. Moving on. Department heads, Lisa Cornwell, have we heard anything from her?
Yes, they're supposed to get back with her at the end of school to talk about the signs.
All right. Police chief, up here.
He's in training right now until Thursday. Everything's going good in the department.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, fire chief, not here. City clerk.
Just to speak a little bit on the welcome signs, I guess, when Amy had contacted me and was going to come talk, I think part of, I don't know if part or all of her issue has been taken care of. We've got water, did we get water in there today? We've got water with timers up there today, so that should all be done. I researched back when all of that was done, and it sounds like when, is it Grayson? Is that, when he came and asked for all of that, that it was even before that, I think, that the water had been requested. So hopefully now with those timers and all of that, we can go forward a little bit better. And I think she plans on working on it the first week of May, and she's been working well with David and Jeff to get all of that taken care of, so.
Before, she wanted water and Mella left her hose out there, and now we've put sprinklers inside of those flower beds and we've got timers on them, so.
Yeah.
Whatever she wants to do with them, we'll set them accordingly, so.
Yeah, I would just advise you, whoever's job it is, you know, it doesn't really matter, but it's the frontage of coming into St. John, and you know, as long as it gets done, that's the main thing.
Yep.
And I guess all, since I put it on there, we need the approval to pay this $3,000 invoice for the nitrate plant. It's that email I had sent to you guys. It's the, it's a yearly fee if I understand right?
Yeah, it's a yearly maintenance fee to calibrate all the nitrate equipment out there that reads the nitrates coming through the water.
So I called to try to get a better understanding, and there, if you see on the back page, that surcharge, it's a minimum of $3,000 every time they come, so.
Do they, by law, have to do it yearly?
Well, it's better if we do it yearly, yeah. You know, we have a good grasp on where the nitrates are, and that lets us blend the water to the highest we can without having to run it through treatment. So it's pretty accurate. We try and blend as much and treat as little as we can, so.
That damn place has a lot of hidden fees. Pretty crazy putting one in.
They're putting a reverse osmosis plant, though. It's different than this. And when they're done with it, I'm going to go see it. Because it will work different than this one does.
All right. Well, I made the motion.
I'm surprised it's still working. That's someone that we have been using, they've up their charge.
Yeah, Jeff said he thought that it used to be like 20 years ago.
We've used them since the day they put it in, yeah.
But and, and what I, because I looked, I tried to prepare to see if you guys were going to try to ask me to look around, but all of their...
They own all the equipment.
All of their equipment. So we would have to essentially restart with a different company if that was something you would need to do. So it's like, I mean, there's your $3,000 bill for their equipment unless you want it to be a bigger.
Kind of a random checkout, though. The analyzer alone is about 20 grand, so.
That equipment out, some of the equipment out there is not the city of St. John's.
No, ours. No, the Hawk equipment is not ours.
It's not ours?
No.
Well, that's a good thing, because I mean, if stuff breaks, do we pay for it?
We're going to pay for it. I mean, you know, anything that's done at that time, he repairs it. I mean, he's never, I don't think he's ever charged us for anything he's done in there, but it's just pretty high to get them to come out.
Yeah, Luton, Colorado.
Yeah, once a year. Yeah, it's usually always in the last part of April or first part of May.
We don't have a choice now at this point.
It's a joy of treating water. I'm sorry, guys.
Can't organize it, I guess. I mean, we can't, let's not get those thing good.
Yeah.
So do I get a motion?
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries four to one.
Our Easter egg hunt is Saturday. The seniors from the school are going to be doing a sausage and pancake feed. The Easter egg hunt starts at nine. Jubilee's in like 38, or I think it's 38. Someone came and told me the numbers yesterday, but I was half listening, so. It's almost here. It's almost planned. And we're still accepting donations. I think that's it.
All right. Any other questions for Jamie?
Jamie, on the rec board, do you think you could ask Burke if they can somehow start sending minutes in our packets from the rec meetings? Will you point at Burke's side?
I'll take care of it.
Does that sound good to you guys?
I'm fine with that.
Add that to a packet.
Might as well keep the lines of communication open. I agree, so yeah.
Do they publish minutes? Is my next question?
Probably not, but I'm sure.
I bet they're going to change their ways.
Probably going to have to.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, moving on. City superintendent, Jeff Williams.
Where do we start? I don't know whether any of you have walked over and looked at the fountain or not. We started chipping away the old plaster and stuff that was on it. It was cracking terrible. It's been leaking for a long, long time, and we band-aided it, band-aided it, band-aided it. And it came off in bigger chunks than what we'd expected by quite a ways. Of course, the bowl is over, the fountain's over 100 years old, and Trent is looking into the possibility, he's afraid that he can't repair it the way that it is. It's in, the concrete's saturated on the inside and in quite a few places, and we've got some spots that are big enough you can put a notebook through them. We're researching the possibility of putting a, how should I say it, a manufactured bowl back in that fountain that would look almost identical to what's there. Two small problems. One of them is the only place we've found is in Georgia that makes one like it. Lead time on them is about six weeks, and the cost is about $225 a lineal foot.
So how much is that?
Which at 56 point so many feet, it's about $13,000 for the bowl. That's not installing it, that's not any of the rest of it. And he'd suggest that we put a liner in the bottom of it, and that way we don't have that problem anymore. But at this point, that's really about all I can tell you. The fountain is, of course, you know, we've taken it down, blasted it, and painted it several times over the years. If we do get to that point, I want to take that fountain down and have it powder coated. There's a guy in Grapevine that will blast it, powder coat it for $1,000, which I think is probably about what we've been paying Warren Brothers to come down, blast it, and paint it. So we can take it in two pieces and take it up there and have it done. It'll be ceramic look from now on and won't have any rust problems anymore, so that's probably the least of our worries on the end, so. Anyway, next thing, I've had several calls from several councilmen, some of you I've met with, some of you I haven't, on Southwest Street, and I've taken part of you down there and showed you what we're up against, and the problem does not lie really with the street, it lies with the 100 feet coming off of the railroad and its railroad property. It doesn't belong to the city. So I've contacted the rail master out of Kansas City, and he's supposed to send the local guy, which I think he's out of Hutchison. He's supposed to contact me, and we're going to go down and look and see if they'll allow us to elevate that, because at the track side, it needs to come up about three feet and go out probably 100 or 150 feet at a gradual slope, which will take a very large sum of material. At this point, we don't know where we're going to get the material or what we ought to put in there, because whatever we put's going to have to be packed really, really well, because if it does get wet, you won't get through it, so. We're waiting on them to see what they decide on that, because without them, we've tried to play the game of doing things without them before, and it usually comes back to slap you, so. We're going to wait, we're not impatient. It's been located, and the phone cable's out of the way, so we can go ahead and cut the ditch and that stuff, but we don't see much need in doing it until we can do it all at one time. So as long as we can keep it smooth enough to drive, we're going to try and leave it alone for now. We're going to generate tomorrow for Midwest Energy. They're going to change a couple of switches down in the substation south of town, so we'll go on our own power about 8 o'clock, and we'll be there until about 5:00 tomorrow night. The lift stations, we've replaced the seals and some sonic starts on the one down Cherry Lane. We've got it up and running for now. I was hoping that I would have a quote, like I told some of you, that we could update that station, which that station was put in in '74 or '75, I think, and it could stand some updating. The equipments, you know, the impellers are getting raw, they're pretty worn, and the pumps are just, they've got a lot of hours on them. But I did not get a quote back from them, so I really don't know where we're at on that deal, so. We've had some sewer problems, as some of you know, and we've had some lift station problems out at the sewer plant and some of that, but at least for now, we've kind of got everything under control, so. We're going to have to do some work out there, too, but we're going to try and put it off to the fold, so. Anyway, that's about all I have.
So as far as the fountain goes, what, whatever you figured out, I mean, we need to figure something out. Jubilee's a month away.
Yeah, about five weeks away, yeah. And we're, and I'm pushing Trent, I've pushed him really hard, and I talked to him again this afternoon, and he's really, and he's working at it just as hard as I am. We're both trying to find somebody to try and get us some kind of an answer about what we can do. So, you know, it's going to be a deal that I may need, I may need to have to call you at pretty short notice, because there's going to be a fairly large expense involved. We, Jamie and I and Pam kind of looked through the amount of funds that we have, the park funds and donated funds and stuff like that today, and there's money there to repair it. So, you know, when I need an answer, I'm probably going to have to have one fairly quick, so. Anyway, don't have too many options.
Should we get an answer tonight?
Great big swimming pool, I guess, but.
Should we get an answer tonight?
It's just, it's a perfect circle, and it's one of them things that's hard to replace.
Well, I mean, you're saying it's torn apart right now, right?
You go over, you go over and look at it.
Jubilee here can be fixed. I mean, you don't have much of a choice.
You said manufactured bowl, I mean, is it...
It's a pre-cast, it's a pre-cast deal in sections, and it fits together, and you epoxy the joints, and then you put a, like a stucco coating over the top of it when you're done, but it's cast.
Test made for our fountain.
It's made for fountains that size. And they make them bigger than that, but this one has an 18-foot diameter. So, you know, I'll know more in the next couple days, but until they call back, I think there must be a fairly high demand for the company that does it, because she said the guy'd been out and he should be back in tonight or tomorrow, that really does the bidding on those. So I'm guessing it's a small company that probably does it.
So like, when it comes in, then Trent will put the stucco or what?
We'll help him, we'll help him set it. If we have to wreck that out, which I think we're probably going to have to, we don't need to pay him to do it. We'll bring a jackhammer over to the guys and I'll take care of it. We'll get it out, get it cleaned up. We want to do some plumbing underneath there while we do. The umbrella's in kind of tough shape on the top. It was built in the '60s. We're going to take it over in the shop and put some new metal on it, and then we'll take it up and have it powder coated with everything else. So, you know, as soon as I know from him what we can do with the bowl, we're going to take the fountain apart, get our plumbing and stuff done, get everything done and ready for that bowl, so. See what kind of setup we have to have for it, what kind of base they want, you know, or what they recommend under it and that stuff, so. Because all it will be, will be the walls, probably, I'm guessing. So the bottom will have to be poured back in, but...
Wait, Trent, he can't make a wall?
He told me he didn't want tackling. He really did.
It's a lot of back pressure.
Yeah, well, the thing we were worried about was how to set the forms up. You know, if we were Borton and we poured granaries and elevators for a business, we'd have the stuff to do it. But, you know, if you've ever watched the forms they build, I mean, it takes a tremendous amount of talent to put it together and make it right, so.
But you're saying there's not a lot of options, but it's kind of what I'm thinking is for him to come up with several options, and then we can have a meeting and pick one of them.
Well, he sent me two pictures, and that was his two options.
From one company?
Yep, and that's it. I mean, we've called everybody. I've researched all day trying to find somebody else that would make one that big. You can get them to 10 or 12 feet, but this one is 18.
But it's six weeks out?
That was the last word that we got. Now the page may change tomorrow.
I just, we won't hear the end of it if it looks like shit.
I know, I know exactly what you're saying. I mean, I've been sweating bullets.
I have a solution for you not hearing the end of it.
What's that?
Tell them to come in here and fill out a complaint form like they're supposed to be doing.
And tell them to put their money in front, and we'll sure take all donations.
Jeff, we don't have any idea how much this is going to cost at all.
I'm going to guess it's going to be in the $20,000 range. It might be a little bit more.
What did you say it was linear foot?
225.
225.
A little over 56 feet in the circumference of it. So it's about $13,000 just for that, plus freight.
Just for the...
Because you're going to have to freight it up from Georgia. I mean, you know.
That'll be four, $4,000 loaded mile.
Yeah, sure.
So once it's put together, Trent would stucco the entire thing.
Yeah, we'll stucco it, see, we'll epoxy it together and put the bottom in it. It'll be ready.
Would Trent hate going to Georgia and bring it back on a backhaul?
When you say we have, what account would that come out of?
There's about three or four. There's a couple of different funds. There's about three or four. There's, there's a couple of different funds. I was researching some before you guys come in. We've got several park funds that we can take some of that money out of it. Then we have a, we have a, I forget what we call it. We have, we have one fund that we take capital outlay type stuff for park stuff and that out of it. So together between the three of them, there's probably 30 to 35,000 there. So, I mean, there's money available to do it. But, you know, I'm, if, you either give me the go-ahead to go ahead and do it, or I'll have to call a short meeting when the time comes because we won't be able to wait.
No.
So. Cause we need every minute we can get here. I hate to be filling it on Friday afternoon, let's put it that way. On the weekend of Jubilee. I'd really like to have it done by then.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing.
You know.
I mean, what I'm thinking is, I don't know how bad it looks, but if it's for sure, like we're looking at six weeks, I would, my opinion is to patch it back up the best you can and throw paint on it.
You ain't patching it. You need to go look at it.
You go over and look at it. And see, the other idea was, and Trent said this, that he talked to a pool guy. And they talked about building a liner for the inside of it that would fit up underneath the cove. And then it would be a permanent fix. Of course, we'd probably have to cover it in the wintertime. You know, so that the sun, because once you take the water out of it, take a chance of that shrinking. And Ross knows because his folks got a pool like that, I do too. And if you take the water out of it, that liner gets all kinds of weird. So we'd have to build something to cover it in the wintertime. But in the long run, the maintenance would go down by probably 50 or 60 percent. I mean, we wouldn't have a leak problem. You know, it'd be easier to clean, easier to keep clean, cause we chlor, we put chlorine in it now. I mean, so that it, so we can keep the algae down in it. But a liner would make it easier to brush and clean, you know, and we're gonna redo the plumbing underneath it to be able to push the dirt into the bottom of it and let it suck the dirt through it if we have to filter in the bottom, you know, bringing it back to make it easier because now when we do it, we have to drain it, wash it, scrub it down, and then put it back in again.
It's a nightmare.
But.
Well.
I guess I would keep looking into it and call us as soon as you know and.
I will. I'll just have Jamie let you know.
Where do you put a cap on it?
Well, he's got 30,000.
What else is that money used for?
I mean, you could do that.
This park stuff. Yeah. Well, just, yeah, anything, any kind of maintenance that needs done.
It'd make it easier, it'd make it easier just to.
Six weeks, seven months.
You mean like the fertilizer they're putting on, it comes out of that fountain?
It makes it easier if he goes ahead and you give him the authority to go ahead and approve this. It makes it easier, but we don't know how much it's going to be.
Your, your funds are general budget funds and add valor, they're not from a cornwell grant or anything.
Yes, some of them are.
Some of them are.
Yes.
So some of them are not tax paid.
You said that money is used for the parks.
I read through that. In fact, we, we wondered about that cornwell fund, so I read through that deal tonight and it said to be used inside the city for things like that.
I know, cause you kinda don't have.
That money can't be used. I just noted if it's not working Memorial Weekend, you won't see me because I'm not showing up down there for nobody. I'm just not gonna do it.
You wanted to buy the park for the county.
We still maintain it.
We've maintained it for all the years I've worked here.
We'd still be fixing it even if the county owned it.
Yep.
Well, we're spending more on it than we bought it for, for sure.
Well, good thing we didn't have to pay nothing for it.
You have to understand though, it's been here over 100 years and we've spent very little money on it. I mean, it does, you know, and it's, it's the pillar of the community. I mean, you know, that's what, that's what everything that we do comes from, from there, so.
How much would you average that we end up spending on our parks, the fertilizer, fixing sprinklers, that stuff? I mean.
Couple thousand dollars.
That's not bad. So what is it? 25,000?
You wanna give him authority just to approve up to that?
And then if we're looking like a lot more, more than 30?
I can get it here for that and then you can figure out the rest of it when it gets here. Let's do that. Is that all right?
It'll cost you twice what it does to get it here.
Well, that's what I say. I think, I think we're gonna have between 20 and 25 in it. I'm pretty sure. I, I don't think I'd be lying to you at all. I really don't.
Just to purchase it's 13,000.
We think somewhere in the neighborhood of 13 to 14,000, plus the freight.
And then we help Trent set it and then pay Trent to finish it off.
Yeah. I mean, we'll help him as much as we can.
Did he, did he even throw your price what we're looking at?
He doesn't know.
Until.
Yeah, until we know. I mean, you know, like he said, like I said, he could patch it. But you're not gonna wanna do that because he'll be back in a year or two. We'll be doing.
Well, I was just saying, if we need, if we know it's gonna be six weeks and we're gonna go with this thing, I'd half-ass that, paint it, throw water in it, and at least if it holds it for two days.
You better walk over and look at it before you say that.
Off the top of it.
Yeah. Because it's at a point we cannot repair it.
Cause they went in to repair it and found that it was.
It started falling apart.
You gotta take, you gotta go take a look at it.
I mean, I don't know how many, we used to use a material called Thera Seal that we paint on it. I don't know how many coats we've put in on it over the years.
All right.
I mean, to cover it up, but it still leaked like a sieve. But, you know. I'm at your mercy. Whatever you tell me to do, that's what I'll do.
So what do you think?
Do you guys think 25 or not?
I don't think you'd be, I wouldn't be surprised at 30.
If you got 30 grand, I would make a motion to just let him spend up to 30,000. If it's more than that, then he can come talk to us. But you're either gonna fix it or you're gonna just take it clear out. Take your pick. That's your two options.
Well, the option would be if, if it's not gonna be done, to knock it down and try to clean it up somewhat.
We're gonna try and do everything we can. I mean, I'm serious.
So I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
The motion is to just give him, spend authority, spend up 30 grand to fix it.
Correct.
And if it's more?
We'll come back.
Then we'll come back.
I'd second that.
I have a motion and a second. All the, any more discussion? All those in favor?
It's a lot of money.
All those opposed?
Abstain. I don't know, I don't know much about it to go on that. I'm not gonna.
I kinda don't know enough about it.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to it. I just.
Right, understood. Two abstains. Motion carries.
And I may have more information in the next few days to make you more comfortable. I'll, I'll just, I'll let you know as soon as I know.
I'm just not willing to take the chills that come with not having that fixed.
Exactly.
I know the feeling.
I think it needs to be done.
Because we either fix it or we're gonna get it run down.
That's all I've got.
All right.
Jeff, on the, on the lift, lift station out there, are both pumps working or just, just wondering now?
The shabs are worn really bad. We put new seals in both of them. See, those pumps work off a vacuum. And they pull a vacuum from the seal on the pump around the interior above the impeller. And they must have 10 inches of vacuum before the pump will kick on. And those shabs are worn so bad that this is the second set of seals we've put in there in less than three years. And in order to pull them pumps down and, and put seals and shabs and everything else in it, it's, it's gonna be about $4,500 a motor to do. And we can't let it go down. I mean, the thing is, we can only do one at a time when we do it. And it depends on the time. If it was in the wintertime, it'd be easier to do than in the summertime where there's more load of it. But it's just wore pretty hard. It really is. I bought about $1,500 worth of parts this time, stuck them all in there. I mean, we keep a few extra parts. I can get them in a day. They come out of Kansas City. But it needs to be addressed at some time. And I've told some of you guys that were on the council, I don't know how long ago it's been, we discussed that. But this guy that we use, he comes out of Leon, Kansas, southeast of Wichita. And he's an authorized repairman for Speth and Lovelace. And he gets from time to time used lift stations that people have taken out and upgraded. And he re, he goes completely through them and then sells them. And he had priced one to me for about 26,000, which is about 20 percent of what it costs to replace that station. That station's in 170, 180,000 dollar range, somewhere close, probably when it's done. So probably 15 percent maybe of what it costs. And he'll warranty him for a year when he does it, but he hasn't sent me back a deal. When I talked to him when we had him out here a couple of weeks ago, he does have a couple that he's rebuilding. But, you know, when I get that, when it comes to me, I'll bring it to you. And we can discuss that. If we do it, we probably don't wanna pull it till fall. You know, so we'll see. But it'll go for six or eight months this way. Should be fine. See, it's all different than the one that's on Fifth Street. The one that's on Fifth Street has grinder pumps in the bottom of it. So we've had, you know, no trouble with that. We upgraded one side that has two pumps in it. We upgraded one earlier this spring and went from a one-horse pump, which was about a 22-gallon amount of pump, to a five-horse pump, which is about an 80-gallon amount of pump. And we wanna go ahead and put the other one in, but we just haven't had the time to do it. They're about 28,000 dollars each. So. And we had the second one up. But, you know, with the excess water that we're getting now from the grocery store and that stuff like, it's just, I mean, we've kept it clean. We use some chemical in there to keep it clean, keep that lining clean and stuff. And as long as it's clean, the pumps will stay clean. And we just haven't had any problems.
Any other questions?
Is the pool taking care of? Like, I remember last year we did that the last minute.
We haven't touched it yet.
And it cost us a lot.
It goes there next.
Okay.
We were gonna take some concrete out and repair some stuff on the north side this spring under that slide and some of that. We've got a leak in there somewhere on the return. I asked David to put it off till next year. We're just gonna put some water in it because we really don't have the time to wreck it out with all the other stuff we got going on. And I don't wanna cut it to the last minute.
Yeah. Well, I guess last year we filled it up, had a drain, the whole thing, right?
Yeah, we had a leak and a big crack in the floor. Yeah, yeah. But, but yeah, we had some stuff, we had some things we were gonna do to it, but we're gonna put them on till next year.
Okay, any more discussion? Moving on. City Attorney, John.
Other than your memorandum, I know old business, I don't wanna do that.
Okay. I don't have anything for council at this time. Moving on to old business. Fuel purchasing.
Taken care of.
All right.
Oh, no, that's for East, I use, for White's. Like.
What's taken care of? I just, when I was checking into us purchasing from White's food liner.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant about the fuel we took on. My mistake.
So from my understanding, we can apply for the Phillips 66 card and have that be another card, credit card type thing? Or they can go in and charge it to our account?
Did you?
I did not confirm that. I went in there and talked to him a few times about the Phillips 66 card and they couldn't ever show me the paperwork, so.
Didn't hear on interest rate or anything?
Do what?
You didn't hear the interest rate?
No, I went in two or three times in the mornings and asked for the card or like the booklet thing. And she wasn't sure where it was, so.
Cause the other, the other options, the old fashioned way where you go and tell them to turn the pump on, you fuel up, go in and sign it. And then you can leave. And that's a way to be able to get fuel through there. And my only concern with the credit card is if we got charged an interest rate by, if we happened to miss a meeting to sign it and not pay it. It's kind of a pain in the ass about it, but I really wanna help that business out.
I don't think it makes no difference to me.
I, I buy fuel at Maxville and we go in it. Everybody writes a vehicle down on the ticket, the mileage, and sign each, sign each ticket.
I would rather see it that way than, than getting the card.
And they bill me monthly at the end of the month.
The supervisors, supervisors all have cards.
Might be better than.
And we sign where they go to and they sign it and then I code it to where it goes.
If they do that, that'd be. They'll, they'll bill us at the end of the month and we'll take it to the end of the next.
Wycock Matt, which was the manager when they first started, I caught him outside his house and he's the one that said, you know, last I heard on it, because there's a new manager, when they were discussing it in their emails, was that that's what they were willing to do, but he didn't know any more about it. So if they're willing to do that, if that's the case, where Jamie or I guess, or Jeff, I don't know who could take care of that, but as far as like.
We already have an account.
So as far as about a, when, like how, what would be easiest for you guys? I mean, I was thinking like one month purchased from one place, the next month at the next.
That's the way we used to do it a long time ago. The problem that I'm probably gonna have with these is that there's no place on there for them to write which vehicles those go into. Because we take that money out of everybody's budget. You know, you might sign, you might sign a ticket, but you might be in my pickup or you might be in a dump truck or something else. See, and we have no way to designate where that fuel goes.
And how are you doing it now?
We do, we, on our tickets at Kansas, when the guys get them, they have to initial them and then they write on them which vehicle that it, it goes into. Because see, we're taken out of about four different departments.
They won't, there's, do you don't think there'd be anywhere on that signature pad to?
That would be up to them.
It's not a sig, what?
You know, all they're gonna, all they're gonna give us is probably a, a credit card deal that we sign or a sheet of paper.
You go in and sign.
But that's what I mean, but we'll sign a sheet of paper. See, they'd have to designate on there. They'd have to make it convenient enough that my guys know to write down what it goes to. Because when I come back, I have to code that to the different departments, see.
Are you guys signing them or?
We sign them on the tickets now.
If my guys can figure it out how to sign a ticket and keep it simply between vehicles.
Jamie make the booklet how you sign, I mean, or you just print it off like this.
If you did that, yeah, and just said it goes to this, sure.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah. Yeah, if they'd accept that, you know, as long as we know where they go.
Like every time you charge, they print out two or three receipts actually, so.
Turn them in and match it up at the book.
Does that sound good to you guys?
I would rather see it that way than.
Monthly, one month, next month, back and forth?
The way we used to do it, we used to.
Just where it's 50/50, help them both out?
All that being said, it's two cents a gallon cheaper at Kansas and you get a dividend.
We don't get a dividend.
You will, you can get, become a co-op member and get a dividend.
We do not give a, get one right now. That's what I'm saying.
Why not?
Cities probably never bought stock in the co-op.
I assume it's hard to do. It's like 50 bucks.
I have not.
Be something, you know, maybe worth checking into. I mean, first of all, I need fuel from Kansas and maybe a little bit.
I can check into it.
There you go, Jamie.
Any more discussion on that?
I am opposed.
What about on the, what about on the police department where, like before we go out to the Tampa or to the Kansas, we use a card and say we're in the middle of pumping fuel and we get a call and we have to go? We can't just run inside and sign a ticket. Are we gonna be able to go back in there?
You're supporting two businesses. You stay doing what you're doing.
Yeah.
Good job.
The only reason we don't carry two cards is, is because the guys would get them lost. I mean, it's, you can't imagine how many places that card can go in a day.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, moving on to the next thing. Memorandum from Attorney regarding division of duties and responsibilities.
Jamie and I put together a proposal that started by my review of what I think you guys are looking for based on your previous discussions. And so to simplify it, she, we highlighted what her current statutory duties are and then what duties that she performs now that she probably doesn't have authority to do on her own.
Making me tall myself.
And then what, what duties that she does that are probably would be considered the, the duties of another department head. So you can kinda see what, what the differences are as far as how her duties would be expanding. She then, I then kind of put together, I thought about doing this a little differently, but ended up just typing it out, what a chain of command would look like in this kind of scenario. And then she added examples of, you know, where she's working and then she's kinda stuck being able to finish what she's working on because she needs authority. Typically, that would be from, from the mayor. And when the mayor's unavailable, then, you know, issues just kinda simmer or sit there. I did not take the next step of drafting a charter ordinance because I just have no idea where this is gonna go with you guys. I just, I just don't. I know that there was a push to get this resolved as fast as we can, but you also don't wanna pay me twice to do something I can do once.
Yeah, we probably can't afford you the rest of the year. Well. I mean, they looked okay to me, but.
I thought it looked, looked fine. I'm interested. That's something, Jamie, as far as keeping the, you know, just you two girls in the office, still be able to manage these new tasks?
New tasks.
I mean, this can be undone as fast as it's done. Now, it's charter ordinance, which means you guys adopt it and then the waiting period is like 60 days.
For.
To allow, after it's published, to allow a protest to the adoption of the charter ordinance. So it doesn't, takes effect automatically after that time period, similar to when you guys adopted, well, exactly like when you guys adopted Sunday liquor sales.
So could it be like these duties and I still just be the city clerk?
I, to be honest, I think what you would wanna do is, is to be the city administrator. So you're comparing apples to apples when, when you're communicating with other cities. I, I guess I'm against redoing the ordinance to the extent to eliminate the city clerk position. You have the city clerk position, you have an assistant city clerk position, you have treasurer's position. I forget where else is all in there.
The utility billing?
If, if you start redoing it, and then you need that later on, and your, your addies. I mean, I, I just don't see the need in rewriting all the laws. Just, I think you just add the city administrator position. You appoint the city administrator, um, and then you don't have to worry about whether your books have the duty for the city clerk because those are covered by the city administrator.
So what checks and balances would we have in place as far as checking, I mean, is Jamie just signing the checks and that's it?
Well, you, what you do is you give her the spending authority you want to give her, okay? Uh, just like, you know, you would for anybody else. She, she's not gonna be able to sign checks. Checks are gonna have to be signed the same way that they are signed now. But, but what's going on is that she's not bringing you for your approval. You guys are reviewing how she's doing things. She's, she can go ahead and make some, three thousand dollars could have been paid. Okay, she could have presented that check to Mark.
Yeah.
It, it, it does, you guys, um, you know, it does put a lot more on her shoulders, okay? Instead of kind of this division of responsibilities across the department heads, you know, Jeff's acting up, you go to Jamie and you hold her accountable, is what you can do.
What you do, I mean, you kind of don't want that. I mean, there's, if.
You don't want to give that up, you mean?
No. There's concerns I have that I really don't feel like speaking about in open session. It's more of a performance, her performance, what it would be like.
Sure, I understand.
Is that something that?
That can be done in the executive session.
I mean, I, this all looks good to me, but I kind of feel like we need to talk to Jamie as far as concerns that.
And, and I will say that I've had candid conversations with her about, you know, well, about all of this. I, I just didn't feel comfortable putting it in a form where you guys would read through it and adopt it uh, without those types of discussions.
I. There's not a whole lot that she's not doing already.
What's the rest of council think?
I mean, I, I'm okay with it. I think there are some concerns that need to probably be discussed. Not in open meeting, but, um.
It's gonna be a right fit, right person type of thing. That's why I hesitate for you guys for writing this, the statutes or the ordinance or your city clerk and stuff, because there may be an instance where you just decide to hire a city clerk and repeal that city administrator statute.
Yeah, I mean.
Jamie moved on, takes a different job somewhere else, and you may, you may decide that you, you can't attract somebody you think needs to be of that caliber to be a city administrator, so you just want to go back to.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's why this position isn't just for any clerk anywhere. I mean, to me, Jamie's proved herself to me anyways to be able to handle it, all these things. So that's why I'm, I'm open to it right now with having Jamie.
Without attempting to, to advocate, I mean, there are a lot of things that are discussed at meetings that, that do require the mayor to come in. Um, that, that really could be, there could be some, some savings in, in time and stuff. But she just had the authority to, to handle it and take care of it. You know, for example, the welcome sign, which apparently we guys have a committee for that was talked about when I first started a law law firm ago and has not heard anything, I mean, that, those type of things. Same on top of the rec commission, that type of thing.
So what's council want to do?
We need, I think we need to talk about any concerns that we might have in executive session with her and come back to this and then decide from there. That's my opinion.
Well, if it helps, I have the lift station tabled, so we can get numbers to you, and we can just go into our executive sessions.
Your major concern in the long run, it's like John says, this is, we're kind of making this position tight fit for Jamie. It's also going to, in the long run, have some budgetary concerns because Jamie's gonna want more money. And in the long run, when you look at the total budget, you gotta figure out how you're gonna pay for it. And we have the infrastructure to pay for and the other things, so.
Have a water fountain to pay for as well.
Have a water fountain to pay for. I guess, is that infrastructure entertainment?
But I can go back to that, but it won't be right here. It'll be in the executive session where I could go back to that. Very easy.
Yeah. Yeah, it may not be a job fit that we, where we need to set it in stone, where this is always what the city, St. John's going to do, but, um, for, yeah, for the time being.
If it fits for Jamie, that, you know, the next time you may have three people in the city office and not two.
Correct.
And the biggest, our biggest budget concern is employees.
Right.
And so anytime we add one, we've got to figure out what we're gonna pay for.
Exactly.
Well.
Okay, so do I hear a motion for executive sessions?
Make a motion to amend the agenda, to go into executive session.
Can't it just go under the one we had?
I don't know what these are for.
One of them is a.
One of them is for my employee.
Oh, yeah, we can do it there.
Can we discuss it there?
Yeah.
Just make it longer.
All right.
And then just go back?
Yeah, we'll just make that one ten minutes. Okay, I'd like to get an executive session to discuss individual employees' performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel man exception to include council, mayor, and, uh, city attorney. Can I get a motion, please?
Is Jamie in on that or not?
No.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries, five oh. We will resume at fifty, excuse me, at eight oh seven. Call this meeting back to order. Do I have a motion on the table?
I'd make a motion to return to executive session for a.
Make it fifteen.
Fifteen minutes. Same people, same personnel, non-elected personnel.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries, five oh. We will resume at eight twenty-two. Call this meeting back to order?
I don't know.
Do I have a motion on the table?
Make a motion for five-minute executive session to include council, mayor, attorney, and Jamie. Non-elected personnel matter.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries, five oh. We will resume at twenty-seven after. What's that?
You can go ahead and do the two.
Call this meeting back to order.
And then come back to this one.
So I can.
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to do that.
Do that. That's a good, good point.
They just fell out.
Like to take, ask for a five-minute executive session to discuss individual employees' performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel manner exception to include, uh, council, mayor, uh, city attorney. So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries, five oh. We will resume at, uh, thirty-three. Call this meeting back to order? Do I have a motion on the table?
I would make a motion to, following the employee performance evaluation, give Jeff Williamson a twenty-seven cent raise.
Second there.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Both carries four one. Thank you. Okay. Like to get a, a ten-minute executive session to discuss possible hire pursuant to the non-elected personnel man or exception police department to include city clerk, council, Sergeant Elliott, and city attorney. So move. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We will resume at, uh, let's see, forty-six after.
Pardon?
The article, please. Call this meeting back to order. And I get a motion, please.
I'd make a motion to hire Tori Perez for a full-time police officer at fifteen dollars an hour.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
I'm opposing.
You're opposing? Motion carries four one. I'll see us to oppose. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that's done. Okay, we go back, um, and take a, what do you want to do this, uh, executive session for?
I think you need to include in your motion, a motion to amend the agenda to add this executive session.
Right. Okay, um, how, how long do you want to have the meeting for, gentlemen? Do we have this executive session? What do you want to do?
I think it's just gonna take probably another ten minutes.
Okay, so ten minutes?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Make it till nine o'clock.
I'd make a motion to amend the agenda to add in an executive session for non-elected personnel. Personnel, what do we do, personnel matter?
Uh, yeah.
To include council, mayor, attorney. Do we want Jamie in here?
Yeah.
And Jamie? For twenty minutes, or fifteen minutes?
Till nine o'clock.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. We will resume at nine o'clock. Call this meeting back to order? Counsel, what do you want to do?
I'm not ready much decision. I don't know if you guys want to delegate anymore, but I'm not ready to right now.
Do we need more discussion on this? Do you want to table it?
Where are you, where are you going to decide if we go for fifteen more minutes? You think we can come up with consensus, or are we just gonna be?
Something I would like is keep table and stuff and table and stuff.
I feel the same way.
I would like to get it figured out tonight.
It's been a month now.
We've thought about it since last meeting.
Not long before.
We need a decision.
So.
I would move to go back into executive session for, I think, fifteen minutes. Make sure we get everything figured out, discussed, um, to include city clerk, mayor, council, attorney.
Till five sixteen.
I have a motion on table. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. We will resume at sixteen after nine.
I'd make a motion to pay Jamie Giddy twenty-six dollars an hour effective immediately.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, five oh.
Do I have any direction from council? Put together either?
I would say, go ahead and start the draft, the tri-ordinance board administrator.
Anybody have any changes to that?
This isn't really in legal ease. I'm trying to make this simple.
You look like a kindergarten daddy.
I did that part.
I don't know if it should be in a motion or a suggestion.
This probably should be a motion. That's a pretty big deal.
I would move that the mayor and clerk begin to implement as many changes in this administrative position and implement cross-training of city staff and getting people trained to take on the power plant and other things. And start the admin, administration of this already as soon as possible.
I have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Seconds.
We need a motion, don't we?
I don't know.
This is a pretty big deal.
But that's why the motion's.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, five oh.
This is a long break between council meetings. The next one's not till the seventh. If I get council a draft by like thirtieth, can you get me responses, changes, proposed, uh, redrafts? So that we can put it all on the table and look at it once?
Yeah, you'd send it to us. We could make changes and then bring it to the meeting and we can discuss it at the meeting.
No.
He wants to be able to have it done and finalized for the next meeting.
Four options.
How do we agree on any changes?
If, if somebody wants to tweak it, I can have, make that tweak and we can have kind of proposal one, proposal two, kind of thing. Yeah, yeah, don't, certainly don't buy all those emails, but.
I usually can send a reminder for that.
I don't reply all.
Okay, without, uh, any other business to discuss, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed?
I've had a lot of fun tonight.
Motion carries four one.
Hard question.
Thank you, guys.